All right, good afternoon, everybody. It's good to speak again after being off a week here. We started our new schedule of doing the town hall every other week. So I hope that will still prove to be sufficient and things hopefully do not, you know, it's much more information. Hopefully we won't need to discuss more than every other week. But if it gets to the point where we need to do it again, or sometimes every week we will. But I'm hoping that Leah's morning show has helped supplement any information that I missed or any announcements that I make. I thought that was a great idea to do that. So so that's going well. We'll continue to send out memos and reminders of any important things that I feel everyone needs to know about. So hopefully that will be our new schedule for a while. Continue to do the town hall twice a month, every other Wednesday. And then we'll supplement it with memos and through Leah's TV show. So anyway, but it is good to talk to y'all again. I've seen some, seen more people since the past week having quite a long time just with various small group meetings or a committee meeting or just seeing residents just, just in random places maybe, but it was nice to see some, some faces. I went to one of the services here and saw some people. I came to Vespers on Sunday. My pastor at my church actually preached here on Sunday. So there was less than 10 people in attendance. So I came and saw him, hadn't seen him in quite some time. So it's nice to see some residents as well. So glad I was able to join them. So again, thank you for all your continued support and all of your understanding during this time. We continue to do what we think is best for Springmore and, and based on the guidance that we've been given to the state and through organizations and different conversations and just, and just overall, just again, what we think is best for Springmore, the population. So I'll go into a couple of, of highlights I want to talk about and then I'll get into some announcements and then I'll be happy to take some calls afterwards about anything that y'all want to discuss. Try to keep all of these COVID related stuff. So just trying to keep it to that. That's what the town hall is for, especially during this time. So most all of this is COVID related and we'll try to keep everything to that. But I'm happy to try to help you all with any other questions or concerns you may have. I wanted, wanted to start off by telling everybody about our math test that we had last Wednesday. It was going on during this time on August 5th. They came in really early, about 5:30 and they stayed throughout the afternoon. So they were able to test all the third shift people when they were leaving, first shift when they were coming in, and then second shift when they were coming in. So we got close to probably 100 employees tested that day. We did not get all the staff members because they were here just for one day. So we did the best we could to get people to come in even on their days off or if they have another job or something of that nature. But it did not produce the same amount of results as we did last time because we did that on our dime and our time. And Margot, our infection control nurse worked tirelessly for goodness, well over seven working days to come in almost every day throughout the night and in the morning to make sure she got almost 220 employees tested, even ones that work on a very sporadic basis. But, but we were able to test the majority of the people that were here that work on a regular basis. And we also tested all of the residents in the health center as well. We have not received any results yet. They are telling us it would be five to seven days, five to seven business days for any results. We're on day five right now, so we're on the early end of that. But just, just forewarning, we have talked to other communities throughout the state that have had their testing already and they went up to 10 days until they found results. So it's just, this is a great thing that they're doing. Now I'm glad that they did it and it's going to be reimbursed by the state. But it's the lag time that's really concerning when 10 days goes by and something could have happened during this time. So until we get really quick turnaround times, I don't think we'll be able to, to, to get our hand, our hands on it or get our hands around it the best we can until that happens. But still, this is better than nothing. I'm glad that the state and the government's making an effort to do this, which is great. So that's the first of one thing of good news I had to say that that's been completed and we're waiting. And then I'm sure it was announced in the news, but I think last week during Mr. Cooper's press conference that he announced, or Mandy Cohen announced that they would begin testing skilled nursing staff members every two weeks. And that would be paid for through the CARES Act. So that would not, so Springmore would not be directly funding that. But as far as details on how that's going to happen, who's going to conduct it, how quick we'll get results, that has not been relayed to us. There is indication that we can use whoever we would like as far as lab company and they will just reimburse us. So we, when we did our private testing that we paid for, we used Mako Labs and we got some results back as quick as 48 hours. Some of them continued to lag a little more as cases started increasing and their demand started to increase. But we're hopeful that we will use them. And once we get the details of, of how that's going to work, we will implement that. We're just waiting for that. So again, it's been announced, but, but no details. But just be mindful, it's only for the health center and it's only for the staff of the health center. So it's not going to be the residents every two weeks. It's only going to be the staff of the Stuart Health Center. So that's nurses, CNAs, and any dining or housekeeping employees that work there on a regular basis. I'm fine with that because the residents, we keep a close eye on every day. So we do wellness checks on them twice a day so we can pick up on their symptoms and their change of behavior. Employees are a little different, the fact that we, they leave and they come back and they have to leave and they come back. So we don't know what they're exposed to when they're outside. So the quicker we can know about them, the quicker I think we get our hands around it. We always said, and what happened is if we got the coronavirus in Springmore, someone will bring it in. That actually happened. Somebody brought it in. So, so if we can keep it out or minimize the amount of people coming in with a positive or asymptomatic results and we know about that, that will be less harm, obviously, that the residents will be exposed to. So I think we're doing good with our residents and identifying them very quickly. But the staff is what I think the main focus should be. It looks like that's what the, the two-week testing is going to focus on. So as soon as I get more information on that, I will be happily to share that with everybody because we're anxiously waiting as well. But really glad that they've implemented this and they've got the ball rolling even though we don't have details yet. As far as visitations in the health center, I know there's a good many spouses that have loved ones in the health center and not being able to do visitations has been really, really tough. I, I know it's very tough and I've said to each one or each one that's asked me, and I think they know that there's nothing that I personally can do about it. It is something that we've been mandated by DHHS to not allow visitation. We can be cited for it. Other communities have been cited for it. Leading Age North Carolina and then some other counterparts, some of the for-profit communities throughout the state, they've all banned together, the nonprofits as a, just it's a big group to advocate to the state to allow outdoor visitation for skilled nursing. So I wanted to read this directly from our president of Leading Age North Carolina, Tom Akins, who's been a huge supporter of just everything. He advocates for us and he's quoted as saying, "We're disappointed." This came out last Friday after the press conference. "We were disappointed that the state continues to be in a holding pattern regarding outdoor visitation for skilled nursing facility residents. Leading Age North Carolina continues to advocate for the state to release guidelines that provide for compassionate and safe visitation for the most vulnerable in our communities." So, so again, that's just coming straight from him. There's been nothing by the state or the health department or anybody giving us the okay or even some type of, of potential roadmap of how we can do actual face-to-face outside visitation. So I wanted to read that directly. So you would kind of make that care a little more oomph to see that it's, that it's not just, again, I think everybody believes in not just me saying that, but it really is a lot of proof in the pudding here with this. And then it even goes on a little bit further to say, "Many details were not announced at the press conference, including procedures for testing." Talking about the two-week testing, we don't know how that's going to be done. The reimbursement is through the CARES Act, exactly how that works, I'm not sure. And then reporting. We will keep you updated and as we receive more information, we'll let you know. Tom. So again, there's just a lot of things that looks like they have planned in motion, which seems like great ideas. The two-week testing and they're working on outside visitations, but again, nothing as of yet. So I really hate that, but as soon as we have more information, we will let y'all know. In the meantime, we have worked to think of everything that we could do to just continue to have the most safe working environment ever. I tend to think that people are more safe and more conscious at work than they are at home, but you know, we're not, we can't, we can't monitor, you know, 100 staff members in the health center every day. So, so we have to continue to remind them and, and preach best practices and give in services and do things. So I was, I tasked some key staff members, our director of nursing, assistant director of nursing, infection control nurse, and administrator to come up with some things that I think that would really help. And I was, some of my ideas were educational opportunities for staff. It's looking at spreading people out more and then also doing, actually monitoring people more. So what we've come up with or what they came up with, based on those recommendations, are six in services, starting, actually was yesterday, started yesterday, two, six days of in services with two, with two times each week. So there's a total of 12 in services. So for instance, yesterday, there was an in-service at 10:30 and 3:30. And tomorrow, there'll be one, there'll be two in-services available, 1:00 PM and 4:00 PM. So these in-services are in the first floor ABC dining room, which is a large room. And this is to go over what our infection control survey pointed out and recommended for us for best practices. So you know, the basic washing the hands, wearing the mask, that needs to be reminded and continue kind of drilled into residents, excuse me, employees and best practices for residents, but mainly for our employees in the health center, but also other things. So Margot's created these in-services and that's just to let you know that we have started that and they're going through August 22nd with two sessions apiece. So I'll report back on that. I think I'm planning to go, I think the 21st is when I'm going to try to attend one and I'll let you know how that goes and what we get out of that. Another thing we've done, you know, we have, we have so many staff and there's only so many areas that they can eat lunch and take breaks at without getting so, so close to each other. So we have two break rooms in the health center. So we have, so they, they've identified places on first and second floor where people are going to not be encouraged, but pretty much mandated to take their breaks in order for them to spread out and make sure they're socially distanced. The break rooms will still be in effect, but they'll only be in certain ones. Based on the first floor break room in the health center, there's only going to be two chairs in there for staff to sit down and be available so they can properly social distance. Second floor break room's a little bigger, so they can only have four. And then we've got many other areas such as the day room and B Hall, Clayton Activity Room, Clayton Clean Utility, Clayton Sun Room, Sea Wing Chart Room and Sea Wing Sun Room. Then they can have anywhere from two to four people. Some, one room's two, one's one, one's two, one's three. So each location has the ma, the max amount of staff they can have based on square footage and to properly social distance. So this was implemented today for max capacity for eating and break room access. So again, just something else that we can do to make sure that staff is properly social distancing during their breaks when they do have to take their mask off and they are eating and, and socializing. So we have that. And this is just a little sign, nothing to zoom in on really. It's just a little sign that says max occupancy per location. And we'll make sure this sign is on each location that I just mentioned. There's about 10 or 12 different locations and it says maximum occupancy, not to exceed one person, two people, three people. So this will be posted at each one so they know. And lastly, we have five key staff members consisting of Leslie, who's our director of nursing, Diane Clinton, who's our care plan coordinator, Gail Bailey, who's our assistant director of nursing, Helen, our assistant care plan coordinator, and Carrie Corley, our healthcare administrator, that they are going to perform audits twice daily in the health center between nine and 12 AM and three and six PM. And they're going to be checking for certain items. There's, there's a checklist that they've created and there, some of the items they're going to be checking are the, the break rooms and other rooms to make sure that the people are not exceeded the capacity that we have on each one and they're socially distanced. There's no more than the correct amount of staff on the elevator. Make sure that the nursing stations are not too crowded where the residents are lacking social distance. Observing all staff are wearing masks properly. That means over the nose and the mouth. We've got to make sure they're covering both in order for it to be effective. Make sure staff is wearing gloves in the hallway. Make sure that they're washing their hands. And any other, and any other audits or deficiencies that they see, they'll write up here in the bottom and they'll turn this into this task force and they will review these on a regular basis. And then when there's something that's lagging or individuals they identify, we'll zone in on them and we'll do one-on-one teaching with them. We'll do corrective action if we have to. If we've reminded people more than once about wearing your mask properly, that's pretty simple. So we can't continue to just, to rely on people to do that, although we should. So we have to take corrective action if necessary for them. But I think this is a great way for us to just, to just be another set of eyes to do all we can to make sure that the staff is working and, and socializing as safe as possible while, while it works. So, so I'm excited about them getting that started and they're a good group. When Leslie and Margot, they do something, it's pretty detailed and it's just pretty, pretty well thought out. So they had that to me within like less than 24 hours, which is not surprising, but amazing. And they'll, they'll jump all over that. So hopefully that will help. A few other things I wanted to mention that will, that y'all will see here in the near future. We have ordered and invested 42 hand sanitizers that will be strategically placed throughout Springmore and North and South Village. Some of the areas they'll be, will be at each elevator on all three or four floors and all tra, high traffic areas such as the post office, common rooms, anywhere where there's a lot of touching or interaction as far as touching the mailboxes or, or touching, you know, furniture in a common room. So we'll have those in those areas. They are on order and when they are, when they arrive, our maintenance staff will install those. So Margot strategically found 42 different places to put those and that's how we came up with that. So I'll give more information once they are here and once they're being installed. But again, there's going to be multiple, total of 42 hand sanitizers all throughout the community that I encourage you to use anytime you see one. When you see one, I'd use it. Before you hop on the elevator, when you get off the elevator, when you go to a common room, leave a common room, just make sure that you're utilizing that. Another thing I wanted to mention was if there's any independent living resident that, that does go out for a COVID test at their doctor's office, CVS, urgent care, anywhere, the clinic needs to know about that. I'm not saying that's not happening, but, but, but we just need to know so we can make sure that we get your results and also to make sure that you are quarantining during that time if you're displaying any symptoms. So we know who is, who needs to be on isolation. So we keep up with an isolation log each day and Joy sends that out. And that's based on people returning from the hospital, from the emergency room, developing symptoms if they've, there's a couple of other scenarios. But now we want to make sure that anyone that's being tested for COVID, we need to know in the clinic so we can properly put you on a list, have you quarantine until we get your results back and then check on you if, if needed. It's all for your safety and all for the resident's safety. So just call the clinic and they will, and they will know what to do. Another announcement, our audiologist, Cindy, Cynthia Schaefer, she said if anyone's needs anything, until she's back out here full-time, she comes, well, on her regular schedule, she plans to come back on the, when phase three starts, whenever that may be, maybe quite some time, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, that, that if you need her in the meantime, just to let her know. If anyone needs hearing aids looked at, she will pick them up in the morning and have them back by the afternoon. So all you need to do is just bring them down to the lobby of the health center where Joan is, with those sliding glass doors. I think if you know Joan, Joan is the young lady that sits right outside, used to be Angela forever. So sliding glass windows before you go through the double doors to get to the health center. Joan Marion, she will contact Ms. Schaefer and hold your hearing aids and then you can go pick them back up. So again, go see Joan and she will get ahold of Ms. Schaefer if you have any issues with your hearing aids. All right. So I want to go over a couple of announcements regarding dining. We've got a lot going on in dining right now. And some immediate things I wanted to go over was the, our current menu we're in. The current menu, obviously, is the, still the, the fall/winter menu. Y'all know that we have been in a mobile kitchen for probably going on six months now. We are doing inspections this week. We had one yesterday. We're probably going to have one tomorrow or Friday and maybe one early next week. So all the work has been completed. We're just waiting for the inspections to happen, to get back in the kitchen. So as we prepare to get back in the kitchen and get things rolling again, we have taken, or we, not me, dining, has taken our current menu and they have added 28 new items that are more summer items and put them on the menu, which obviously means that they've taken away 28 fall items. So I think we're on week three, so you should have seen these start already. I think we're on week three. If I'm, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I, we have a five-week menu. And again, 28 new summer items have been added to the menu. I'll just kind of give you a couple of examples of what those were. We replaced pumpkin pie with Rice Krispie chocolate cheesecake bars, chili with barbecue chopped beef, a fall salad with a marinated summer salad, acorn squash with zucchini noodles, pumpkin bread with blueberry bread, butternut squash soup with tomato and rice Florentine. We have, blah, 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 beef liver and onions to barbecue beef brisket, pickled radishes, the sweet potato salad. So again, you can just see those are just some that really stuck out to me. Chicken pot pie. And now it's going to be grilled chicken with spinach. So again, you'll see more of the heartier, more winter items be deleted and summer items put on. So that's the first of what we're going to be doing. Those are some quick changes that JP and the dieticians were able to make. There'll be more changes in the next update. So not next Wednesday, but the Wednesday after, I'll have some more updates. We hope to be in the kitchen by then, but if not, at least I'll have some updates. We're going to be doing some highlights with the chef soon with some meet and greet and some specials. So again, I'll have more information on the menu and then certain highlights that we'll be doing. We have a new highlighted system that we're using for delivery. Delivery is huge right now and that's something we'll have to address and figure out how we're going to do that moving forward if we continue to do it. Right now, I think it's valuable and I think a lot of people appreciate the convenience of the delivery and not having to get out or be around people, but also believe it creates the most complaints just due to the whole process. I think when food's delivered is not as warm. I think there's a lot of error when food's delivered and, and I think the way we have to package it is not that great. So we're trying to make that the best we can. There's been a new highlighted, highlighted system that's been put in place to make sure you're more accurate with, with what you're getting. I know it seems easy just to follow something, the list, to have something, put it in a box and, and just send it on. But it's a little more complicated than that when our delivery is double what the takeout and in the dining room is. So we're doing at least double. If we have 40 people to do takeout and, and dining together in North Village, we at least have 80 to 100 that, that's doing delivery. So again, that, that whole process is more time consuming and it's also double, double the, the amount. So, so I guess the whole point of that is just, just to know that the, the delivery is, is, it's a large portion of how we're delivering food. And we're trying to come up with a new, well, we already have a new highlighted system that's going to make it more accurate. And then we're, we're getting new takeout bags, I think will help. More of a brown paper bag that's more durable and sturdy, hopefully to keep the food a little warmer, it'll keep it maybe all compact together and not having it falling over. They're using this in one of our sister communities that's been very popular. So, so, so we're going to implement those. And then just really encouraging people, if, if you want to get out, to come and do takeout and come to the dining room. We can have up to 44 people in the dining room and we can actually have more than that. We have spaced out the tables to where they are six feet apart and each person is six feet apart. We could go more than that. Technically, the tables just have to be six feet apart, but the people sitting there don't have to be six feet apart. But to take extra precautions, when we first started that, we wanted to kind of, kind of just tip our toe into the water per se at first instead of dive right in. So we implemented 25% capacity and we're not even reaching that except for Sunday. So if we do get, get to a higher capacity, then we can, then we can increase the chairs at the table. And I think it may really help with the, with the overall food issues that I'm hearing from people. I really think delivery is a big part of that and we've got to address that when we move forward. Do, uh, do we, how long, do we continue to deliver? If we do continue delivering shortly after this or forever, is there a fee involved with it? That's very common for people to have food delivery to their, to their apartment or house, but with a fee associated with it. So we, there's just a lot to work out. I have no idea what's going to come of that, but I think for right now, we want to keep that option available, obviously free of charge and let y'all have as many options as possible to make sure that your food is delivered. And then, and lastly, do not hesitate to call or email Jennifer, George, or JP. Jennifer's the dining, dining services director. George is our operations manager and JP is our chef. Y'all are more than welcome to come to me with any issues that you feel I need to know. Just please know I will always go with them and a lot of times if we meet, I'll have them involved. Met the resident last week, had a very, I think, positive meeting and had them involved. So, so, so just do not hesitate to reach out to them. All right. So speaking of JP, he had his first, well, I think he put it together, but Joanna did her first virtual cooking party today and that was at 11:30. And I think JP put together everything and these, these to-go boxes and had them delivered right before the Zoom call. And Joanna Bell, who's our dietitian, she demonstrated how to do, how to make a vegetable and bean quesadilla. And I hope that went well. It said dining services would deliver ingredients to you and you can join the Zoom call. So that was registered in advance and I think that had to be done by August 3rd at 5:00 PM. So I'm not sure how many people did that, but if you did do it today and you want to call in here in a minute, 7054, and let us know how it went, I would, I would love to hear it. It's a really nice flyer that they did, but I know anything that Joanna does is always usually very well received. And this is just the first of many things that JP's going to be able to do. He has only been here about seven weeks and he has just not been able to even just, even tip the iceberg of getting to do things and making meals and getting in front of people. I know he has some, but we're so restricted and focused on getting in the kitchen that all that's going to be so much ramped up when we get into the dining room again and get into our kitchen. I think you'll see a huge, huge difference in JP's excitement and his dedication and his talent for cooking. All right. So the last announcement I'll get into will be spiritual wellness. Pretty straightforward of this. Today, after we're done, unless you're watching the Hurricanes, see about the guy that scored on the Hurricanes, feel free to call him that too. It was tied two to two in the first overtime. So, or at least when I was walking up here, they were going into overtime. So I'm not sure how that ended, but I was listening to it on the, still going, all right? Huh? 3-3, all right. I did, what was the final last night? They went into like five overtimes.
Four teams and Tampa Bay.
Tampa Bay, one in five overtimes. So yeah, I couldn't stay up much longer for that. And I could really care less about Dallas and Tampa Bay unless they're playing Carolina. So I just shut that one off. But anyway, hopefully Carolina will pull it out and excited about that. So, but at 3:00 PM, I would suggest we do vital conversations. If you're in that group, group one, they'll be doing that. Thursday, which is tomorrow at 10:30, the normal Zoom call with the chaplains. Call to register if you have not done that. And then Sunday, Vespers at 7:00 PM. Juliana will be preaching and Sharon Schultz, who's I think a Lutheran pastor, minister, will be assisting her. So I was able to come to Vespers last Sunday and I thought it was very nice. I'm biased. My pastor was here doing the guest, guest preaching, but Juliana and Lori did such a good job. They're so professional as always and just really did a great service. So I'm glad to finally be in communal setting to, to, in worship, which was nice. So, so before we take any calls, the last thing I had was our, was our chart here. Our latest daily chart as of now are seven active cases. We have four residents that are, have COVID. COVID. Um, two are actually in the hospital and two are in the health center, but we have four total residents and three staff members. So we have a total of seven. We got down as low as three last week. And then we had a quick uptick and surge, um, in the health center. Um, and again, we may have more once we get our test results back from the, um, uh, from the state that did, that, did that. Again, the, the residents, um, we pick up much quicker because we see them on a regular basis and they seem to display symptoms, excuse me, a lot quicker than some employees do. So, um, so I'm thankful that we're able to pick up on that. Um, but the employees, um, still with them coming in every day, that's, that's the tough part. And that's why I hope some of these in services are going to help. But right now we have seven total, um, four residents and three staff. So that is all I have for today. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And, uh, of course Holly will send out a recap memo that we either get out late tonight or, or sometime tomorrow. We normally get out the next day. So it'll probably be tomorrow before we get it out to everybody. But, um, if not, you may see it tonight. So any questions? Okay, good. So we just had a comment, uh, Mrs. Louise Cockrum, um, says she, um, participated in the virtual, um, dining event today of how to prepare the vegetable quesadilla and bean quesadilla. She said it went really well. All the ingredients were delivered as they said right before. It was fresh and it was pretty easy to do. And she said she hopes that they do more. So, um, I'm glad that went well. So another way of just kind of being creative through, uh, through technology Zoom and, and their, um, in-house TV channel. Um, I hope to get back face-to-face soon, but until then, um, I'm glad we have those options. So thanks, Ms. Cockrum, for calling in and seeing how that, uh, how that went. All right. All right. So we don't have any other questions right now. Um, I hope that's a good sign. I hope, um, I don't know if as many people tuned in or if I covered everything. Um, I hope that, um, y'all can continue to see what we're doing and what we're trying to do on a tire- literally tirelessly day-to-day effort of keeping everybody safe while continuing to, um, keep things going here at Springmore, uh, with dining and with, um, renovating, um, um, an original kitchen and with pushing through with the health center renovations and then just the day-to-day things that go on. Those things don't stop either. And, uh, and this just, um, it creates a lot more, um, a lot more just things to do, but by, they're by far the most important things to do. So I hope that y'all can see that we're doing the best we can with that. I continue to get good compliments and, um, but I know people are tired and I expected this, um, early on, even before COVID happened. I knew that the, the food, everybody would be very appreciative at first and a lot I know are still are. And then they would get tired of it because it was delivery or if it was plastic plates and not the full menu. Um, I, I, I knew that would happen. Um, that's just reality. Um, but we're almost to the end of that and our goal is to make dining the best it can be with a wonderful new kitchen. We've been working to enhance our dining experience even further than that. Um, and then we've had the whole COVID thing hit. So that's been another kink we've thrown into it of a temporary kitchen and then delivery and then all the precautions with the employees. And it's just been, um, it's been very trying, but, um, but it's, uh, but we continue to move forward and I think we're doing the best we can. Um, it's, it's just, um, it's sometimes it's frustrating when you think you get things down and then they come back up or another employee test passed or another resident. It really weighs on you, but, um, but you just got to remember that you're doing all you can do. And I have no doubt and I'm confident we are doing all we can do and continue to think of ways to do that. So I hope y'all see that and, um, I hope y'all still feel confident in everything we're doing. So anyway, with that, I will say thank you and we'll get another update out to y'all and to family members. And then we will see y'all in about two weeks. Hope you have a great rest of your week.